And will now come to order, Mrs. Cender, will you call the roll please? Okay, Mrs. Coghill, here. Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson? Here. Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Inteheart?
Here. Mrs. Swanson, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
We just to the flag of the United States of America and as do the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now entertain a motion to suspend the rules in a general workshop setting.
Move by Mr. Roman?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Swanson. Mrs. Cender, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Coghill?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteheart?
Yes, we're now in workshop setting. Dr. Schuler.
The first topic that we have on the agenda for tonight for the workshop is a technology update, so just a couple of comments that I want to make at the onset of this presentation before I turn it over to Rod. So what you're going to hear tonight is both an update of one of the board's goals that relates directly to technology and the integration of technology into classrooms, but what you're going to see in an update to that goal really is an update to a master technology plan. And so there are two documents that you have in front of you. One is a copy of the PowerPoint slides, which were included in the board packet. The second document is just a one-page document that's called Master Technology Plan, and it just really captures all of what's in the PowerPoint in one kind of, I think, easy-to-read page. So I think the concept of building out a technology plan consistent with the goal that the board set is to try to get that plan in a format that, over time, can continue to be updated and progress track. So that's where that plan is. So we may refer back to this document from time to time, but again, all of the information that's in this document is in the set of slides that Rod is going to go through. So without further ado then, I'm going to turn it over to Rod to take us through the document tonight.
Thanks, Dr. Schuler. It seems like every April I just can't wait, and then this year we're doing it in March, so change some things up. No, the springtime is always a good time to do the tech plan because we have a good, you know, almost three-fourths of the year underneath us to see how the changes that we made the previous year work, and really looking forward to pre-budget so we can, you know, pat the back of the money man, get what we need to move forward. But I want to take just one second to go a little bit on the way technology planning was in the district previously, really lights off, or is that? I can do it.
Previously in the district in the last, you know, four years, four previous years to doing this, a lot of the things were in silos. We kind of fixed issues as they came apart. When the first came in, the desktops were six years old, they needed to be replaced. It was something that had to happen. I think the list up here, you know, kind of identifies some of the major ones that we've done in the last few years. We wiped out or redone just about every system, you know, minus a few that we have to look at. It really put us in a great place to kind of look at more of a comprehensive technology plan embracing what FIT brings to the party, you know, the new committee that we got together, really kind of pushing the use for technology and making sure that we have everything in place when we need it instructionally, instead of us choosing that it needs to be replaced and fixed. We're at the point now where we can really kind of make a comprehensive move forward. Looking at that, this technology plan, you can kind of hear me say as we go through this, one of the big things we're trying to do is, if I really go back, we'd actually be in year five of the first technology plan that was presented. And we know as technology constantly, constantly changes, I think really having a focus to tie it to what's happened instructionally now, that the foundation is there, that we can build something that we can look at each year and make simple changes. One of the big goals we're trying to do with this plan is always being ready for what's next. Two years ago, Chromebooks were something we'd never heard of. Who knows what the next thing will be in six months that we need to be ready for? So we're trying to make a plan that has us available, that if changes need to be made into the next year, there's something new that's going to come out in '16, '17. We have an infrastructure ready, instructionally we're ready, and we have a system that will be able to embrace those changes as they move forward. It allows us then to evaluate those every year and really look at it financially to say which are the ones and the moves that we need to take going forward. For this plan, instead of outlining, you know, a year to year, we're going to kind of look at it in the five categories that are identified here, one being infrastructure and wireless, student access to devices, classroom infrastructure, operational technology systems, and reliability and stability, and I'll be going over each of these five. But this slide just kind of shows where they all tie into Division 2018. The layout is kind of, again, very similar. There's, as Dr. Schuler said, it's something that can easily change every year as new things come in and move. Those five areas are probably going to stay a constant that we'll see for a long time. We need to keep those five things in our focus and make sure that they're sustained and available for whatever comes next to be able to move forward. The first category is infrastructure and wireless access. Three years ago, we redid, you know, every switch, we added wireless and redid the phones. Just like every other technology system, the wireless has changed. Three years ago, those access points were one of the top, you know, out there at the time. We're seeing some limitations with what they can do, mainly in the area of how many devices can access those at a time. We need to fill in some more spaces for those, the amount of bandwidth that can go through those. At the time when we put those in, the bandwidth was three times more than what we could put to a desktop. Now, the ones that are coming out now have the same bandwidth that we can now put to a desktop, which is almost three times more than that. So we have to be ready for that as we get to a very digital environment. There's also a little bit of control and management that we need at the wireless level for the different types of rooms and instruction that is going on in those rooms. A long time ago, the wireless access points you had at your house, all they do is take your internet signal and send it so you can use it. Now we're able to control what type of things could go through each of those access points, so we need to be ready for that. If it is a room where they need a higher availability of multicast or something, we can make that change at that room, and it doesn't affect the rest of the building. You can actually drill it down to each individual room, so those rooms that need more processing power to them, we can make those changes, work with the staff if they're having problems with those access points. It really kind of gives us a very granular look as in each instructional area and with all different types of devices, whether it be iPads, Chromebooks, whatever device it is, we can support them all. They all need something a little different. iPads really like a different type of configuration and Mac than Chromebooks do or than laptops do. So having that infrastructure and a solid piece of equipment in every room, access point in every room, is one of the big benefits moving forward to being ready for everything that's coming. Currently in our infrastructure and access, when we did the rollout of Wi-Fi, we did access points every other room in the high schools, so it kind of zigzags across the hallway. Again, the concept of one-to-one was not something we were thinking of. It's still not something we're thinking of, but when we start to talk about accessing 30, 45 devices in a classroom, almost every kid now walks in with a device that's hitting the access point outside of the devices we're handing them. There are a lot of staff members that walk in with three or four devices on themselves that hit an access point. We just need to have more. We need to have more so we can get more devices on the network. Currently at the middle school, there is an access point in every classroom, but they're still running into that same, if there's 30 Chromebooks in a room and every student has something and the teacher has four or five, that access point is now kind of a bottleneck, needs to be changed. At the elementary, I'm sorry, we do have 100% coverage Wi-Fi. We haven't had a lot of issues other than maybe some density areas there, but this plan moving forward will help actually add access points to the elementary as well. The first step in this plan is looking at adding access points, replacing the access points at the high school level in its first year, that would be both at North and South, with a different type of access point. It's just taking one down, putting the different one up. Luckily, our controllers and everything are upgradable, they don't need, we don't need a whole new backend wireless infrastructure. It's just changing the access point to a different model that will allow more throughput and more student devices on that access point, and filling in some of those classrooms that don't have them at the high school. Taking those 100 down at each high school or 200 and then filling in areas at the elementary levels, we do have more density at the elementary levels, we bring in more devices. Following through then, that same thing would happen at the middle school level, the following years, we would replace the ones at the middle school level and move those down into the elementary. One real reason we're looking at this now is E-Rate has changed. Originally, E-Rate only covered the money we pay to AT&amp;T for the internet to the building back and forth. They are actually now as part of an E-Rate fund, the next two years, they're funneling billions into it from the U.S. government, and they are now actually having it all the way down to the access point level. So we could see a considerable, almost 50%, back on what we buy with these with an E-Rate revenue coming in. We've applied for that, we don't know until we find out after we do the work. It's kind of a, you have to sign up and do it, and then you get your refund the next year. But with those E-Rate funding changes, this is kind of the year to take advantage of it if we can get half of that cost back in the revenue. Student access to devices is a second level. The secondary we're looking at, we've heard us mention this multiple times, we're trying to get that student-to-device ratio down. We want to systematically decrease that so that it's not every one level gets something moving forward. Part of this plan also looks at the refresh each year. This year is the elementary, desktops are going out this year, the lease, how we refresh that elementary level to see what that looks like. Next year would be the middle school, and then the following would be the high school refresh to plan for that, but trying to get more out of those refreshes into the devices that are also in students' hands, but making sure we still have a sound foundation for what needs to be available in the classrooms and for staff to use. Again, this really matches well with that, the goals of FIT, more devices in students' hands, being able to bring more technology into the classroom to embrace instruction and what those devices need to be used for in the classroom. Current ratios here, you have this chart in your, if everyone can follow me. The first two are elementary, one is the start of the year, the next column is the current ratio, so you can see the work we did this year already to decrease this ratio. We then have middle school at the beginning of the year and our current, and then high school at the middle of the year, the start of the year, and then our current. And you can see we've drastically reduced what those top levels are. The blue in each of those columns is the lowest at that level, so the beginning of the year, we had one elementary school at a ratio of 2.19. The highest was 5.69 with an average of 3.31. Carrying that forward, you can see we brought the average of the entire elementary down to 3.1, and really the big thing is took that school that was way out there at 5.69 and brought it down to 4.02. I think one kid moved in, that's why I made it over two. Because we got it to four and all of a sudden the 4.02, so some kid moved in. That was my... The same thing at the middle school. Middle school has always had a little bit lower numbers, we've had a larger increase for devices there. We have some staff principals who came from other levels that were very Google users. Chromebooks kind of got infused in there probably a year or so before they did in other places, so their ratios are low. But one of the biggest changes we were able to make with Title I funds this year and help from Day's department was getting the high school numbers down to a more manageable level. They just received over, around 500 grant-funded Chromebooks, they're in deployment now, they're starting to use them in different areas at the high schools, but we still want to get those numbers down. People are still clamoring for things and things to use in instruction, so we need to make sure that we can, you know, have a, again, a network that's sustainable for those. Jeff?
So when you talk about this student-to-device ratio, you're talking about devices that the district owns. You're not necessarily talking about a device that a student may bring in of his or her own?
Yes, that's correct. The student-to-device ratio is devices in the building that are used by students more than 80% of the time. So those also include things that PTA have purchased, iPads. Surveys went out to the school to gain those numbers because we don't want that number to go down. It might not include, you know, certain desktops that are sitting where teachers only go and access them, in teachers' lounges and things like that. It doesn't include those numbers. These are devices that the school set are used by students more than 80% of the time for instruction, so computer lab would be one, you know, the drop-in computer lab at the elementary level, the laptops that have been purchased with the board's approval the last two years, those types of devices are what's in that count. Yes?
Question on that, how comfortable are we that the devices we have, that those numbers are functional and not getting in the way of instruction?
Part of that refresh that we talk about is looking at doing those refresh, part of that refresh is looking at, currently we have a lease of laptops coming off that we, that, you know, a lot of people would say are bad, it's really the batteries, so we're going to replace the batteries as part of a plan to keep those out there. Our desktops and laptops, if you were to go out and try to buy new ones right now, the specs that you're going to get on the inside of these devices are about identical to what you're going to buy out there now. Chipsets and computers haven't gotten much faster in the last couple of years, so being able to keep those and get more other types of devices, and Chromebooks are one thing that we're looking at doing. I would say, we repair everything when it's broken now, so if there's a bunch of things sitting that we don't know about, we probably need to know about those, but I don't think there's many. iPads might be getting a little old, the PTAs and stuff have purchased, but we want to build in that plan an option to refresh those. So we always have a current refresh of what's there and a plan to bring in new, kind of two different parts of the device ratio. Looking at that plan then again, looking at, there's two scenarios of bringing the ratio down to 3.1, or I'm sorry, 3.0 to 1 across all levels or 2.5 to 1, so you can see what the two, the next two years, 15, 16, 16, 17, we kind of have in the plan. If we were to bring them all to 3.0, we have six elementary schools that currently aren't there, and both the high schools aren't at 3.0. The middle schools are from that previous chart. One thing to note down here at the bottom, and this has been added, is we do have a number of devices that could possibly be coming in, we do have the, that are not yet in this count, we have the approval of the health that happened at the last board meeting, and there was possibly some other ones coming from curriculum this year that could adjust these figures as to what is needed this year, or lessen the impact of the 190 in the following year, but I did want to let you know that that is happening as those, if they get approved, the numbers might come down even before the end of this year, so didn't want to mention anything else about that. Did I get that?
Sure, at the last board meeting when we adopted and said we were purchasing the health textbooks, you may recall that we were not purchasing as many health textbooks, but we were also purchasing Chromebooks for class use at that time. A lot of the high school curriculum processes we're going through, there are other departments that are very interested in that when we're purchasing our new consumer education economics books. We anticipate that that also is going to be the case, that we'll be purchasing class sets of Chromebooks to go along with that adoption, so it's, we're using the same amount of money, or in the case of the health books, even less than what was allotted, but we're not buying a health book for every single student, we're buying class sets that students would have access to, and also Chromebooks, so that we can create that learning environment that we talked about with the future of instruction and technology, where they're able to collaborate and create and work on projects and do those types of skills during class time. So we're excited about that, the high schools are definitely excited about that. I think I have more phone calls now, hey, we maybe need to do a textbook adoption now, just because they're excited about getting access to the technology. And it's exciting for us because it's not costing additional money, it's just using our funds somewhat differently to be able to provide that classroom environment.
So just a question, so for instance, on the three-to-one ratio where it says six elementary schools would receive devices, in other words, what you're saying is the other seven elementary schools are already at that ratio or lower, and so it's just six that need to get boosted up in some way? It's not that we've chosen six to get to the three-to-one ratio, it's, that would bring everybody to that.
That's correct. It is a systematic, where it looks at bringing everyone at a level down kind of at the same.
Okay.
You know, if we were to go to a 2.75, we would look across and see who needs to get to a 2.75, if we need to go to a 2.5. That's how those numbers have been figured.
Rod, on that point, are we sending a message to the PTAs at those schools that have a ratio of below 3.0 to 1, to, as far as any gifts they want to give the school to buy something else besides devices, or do we want them still to buy devices, or what message, if any, are we giving to PTAs?
I can answer part of that. We've had that conversation certainly with principals. We have not given them definitive guidance that they should or should not purchase technology with available PTA funds. We certainly have made it clear to buildings that this is the current approach to the way that we're deploying technology, and candidly, it is becoming such an essential component to instruction that I think we have to ensure that kids in all of our buildings have access to technology. It can't be just based on whether or not they have a PTA that has the ability to purchase. So we do still have some buildings that are on the lower end of that device-to-student ratio, and the PTAs are still buying technology, and again, we've not said, you know, you can't do that, but we have made it very clear in terms of how we're going about, you know, the deployment of technology. Now, the good news is truly as you look at those numbers and then, you know, begin to project out, when you get everybody down to a three-to-one ratio at the end of this year, that gap is going to have been significantly narrowed. So that was a much bigger problem at the start of this year when the gap across buildings truly was, I mean, if you saw every building on a chart, that chart would have went, you know, like, you know, it was just all over the place. And so with the use of the grant funds this year, we've kind of brought folks down closer to kind of a consistent playing field, will be even closer, you know, after the, kind of the next round of purchase, but some buildings. So it's longer to say we're making sure they know what we're doing. If their PTAs still want to buy it, though, great.
Rod, one quick question on the next slide. Is that three-to-one ratio for each school, or is it of all the levels?
There's a three-to-one at each building. Yeah, I use the average of the levels, but no, it is a three-to-one, three-to-one at every building, looking at each building individually. Yeah, that number of 219 is actually divided up, you know, one school's probably getting 60, one's getting 70, one's getting 20, they're not all getting a flat.
When I look at this, you know, when we talk about Chromebooks...
Sorry, maybe that mic, do you use the... I'm not sure, there's something wrong with that one, sorry. Thank you, sorry.
When I talk about, when we talk about Chromebooks in this health science area and so on, is that the only device that can be used then? I mean, you know, we have this massive population of people on iPads and so on, and it troubles me that if we're walking down a path that only, that Chromebooks, that, you know, maybe 1% of the people have versus iPads that 50% of the people have, that we have the ability to use those devices. And then secondarily, when we talk about goals, I'm not sure that I'm happy with a three-to-one or two-and-a-half-to-one, so I surely would not want to discourage more devices being bought at any school, because I think, when I look at this goal, that's a short-term goal to me. I'm not convinced that we have the right target right now, because I think we have to focus on a time where we have technology available to everyone, and if that's one-to-one or whatever you want to call it, we have to be looking at that goal. And it may not be achievable in the next, you know, 2018, but, you know, when we start talking about this level, those are really steps along the way, and I think we have to strive toward the right goal. So, you know, again, PTAs have been a gigantic source of funding and getting these numbers in the right place. So, you know, one, I'm concerned about that, and then two, I think we make sure we've got the right goal.
Can I comment on the second part of that question first, and then Kate can talk a little bit about the Chromebook iPad thing? So our goal, and what we've articulated to buildings, is that our goal is to get to a point where we have universal access to the technology that teachers need. I don't know exactly what that ratio's going to look like. What I have said to buildings very openly is that I think when you talk about one-to-one, just in my view, I think there are a couple of issues related to one-to-one. One, it typically would suggest that you have one device that you are putting in the hands of every student. So back to your, the question that you did just ask a couple of minutes ago, we've got a lot of iPads, we've got Chromebooks, we've got laptops, there's another machine that's going to be out six months from now, we don't know exactly what it's going to be, and it may serve another unique, you know, learning need. So I think for us, the technology that teachers are using is what works best for the learning experience that they're trying to deliver. So there are some high school departments that would tell you the iPad is best because the app that I want to use is available, you know, through that. Then, you know, right now, the interest seems to be in purchasing Chromebooks based on what it is that they're delivering for us, because if the resources that you're utilizing are truly web-based, Chromebook does a very effective job of getting at that content, advantage of a Chromebook, it's got a keyboard, you know, right with it as well. So we're not limited to just that device, that's the one that we've purchased a lot more of recently, but that's because we didn't have a lot of them, you know, in and around. But back to that original piece, we want to get to universal access. I'm not sure what ratio that's going to be. If that, you know, it may be two-to-one, maybe one-and-a-half to, you know, to one, but when we get to a point where, as we continue to provide professional development for teachers and they're using technology more and more effectively, there's going to be a sweet spot where we've got what we need for teachers to have access to it. Last piece I'll say on that, as I've talked to a lot of the buildings, is that as I go, especially into elementary buildings, there's a lot, there are a lot of really valuable learning experiences that don't involve kids with a screen in front of them. And so if you, if you put a screen in front of every student every hour they're in school, but there are large blocks of time where they don't need it for the learning experience that's called for, I also think to some degree you're over-investing in technology as well if it's just sitting idle for chunks of time. So again, I will say fair enough that we're not suggesting to you tonight, here's your end goal when it comes to device to student. I'm not sure what that sweet spot end goal is going to be, but we're going to do our best to continue to bring that ratio down, you know, as quickly as we can until we get to that sweet spot, and that may change over time as well. For us, universal access next year might be at a two-and-a-half-to-one based on where our teachers are at, the kinds of development opportunities we put in place. As they get more and more comfortable and other, you know, resources shift, then in the out years, that may come down to, you know, to two-to-one, or one-and-a-half-to-one is that sweet spot. So we're not trying to limit ourselves with this, but I think we are being realistic that, I think if in one swoop next year we brought it all the way down to one-and-a-half, I would be concerned that we might be shooting right past that sweet spot and making an investment that truly, as a board, you might not be getting full value out of as well. So I think this is kind of taken into account.
Yeah, I was going to answer the iPad part, too. I mean, we currently have around 1,000 iPads in the district as well, a lot of those are PTA-funded, they are, they do have their place, a lot of the elementary, the science areas at the high school level. We also have quite a few Windows tablets, the Microsoft service-type tablets, it's used heavily at the math departments at the high schools. We have multiple different types of devices. I think for, again, Jeff said it really well, that what the access that people need now is really something that accesses a lot of online material and equipment, or things in the Google environment, which is something where the FIT environment is really, you know, pushing, but we're trying to support everything for what it's best used for.
So to answer that, is it understanding that the, we can access the health book through iPad?
We have a limited number of licenses. It's not that every single student who's enrolled in a health class would have access to that at home, but we have textbooks and they could use a device during class for access to that. But more of the purchase was not so that they can have the actual textbook and just use a lighted screen to read from the textbook, it was more that we wanted to have a device in students' hands so they could collaborate and create over Google Docs, being able to work on projects together, being able to edit each other's work and work collaboratively on that. It was an enhancement of the learning environment, it wasn't just another way to provide information from the health text.
Again, I'm not quite clear. Can I use an iPad and you use a Chromebook, and we can do what you just said or not? We have to have both the same machine?
Oh, you can use different machines. I mean, we've had, we've had all the principals in the room, we're all using different machines and...
and accessing Google Docs and doing that. So, students can still bring in their own devices and be able to do that. I had one more thing to add to Rod's answer about why the Chromebook. We also brought in teams of staff from middle school and high school and gave them Chromebooks to kind of play around with and also something that was more of an iPad feel to it and had them think about how they would apply it in class. And so, we didn't just go, hey, we want to buy Chromebooks. We had staff members use them and think about how they would use them with students and then help make that decision about what would be needed for their particular classrooms. So, it wasn't just that it was the cheapest that was available or that it was what we over here at the SSC thought was best. We did have teachers experiment and have different devices and then make that decision.
You know, can I, because I think this is an interesting discussion because typically when you hear about one-to-one, I guess I want to clarify exactly, exactly what you said because when you hear about one-to-one, my vision is that a district has decided on a particular device which they issued to their students and then their students can not only use it in school but also take it home. I mean, isn't that sort of typically when people say one-to-one, that's kind of what they're referring to? But that is not what we're, I think, looking to do. What we're looking to do is provide the devices in school, which might be a variety of different devices, but then I think the question is, how does that translate to what students have to do out of school? In other words, if they're working on something in class on a Chromebook, but they go home and they've only got an Apple environment, is that going to, how's that going to affect them, I think is the question.
And we, yeah, we have an answer. Part of this solution is looking at, is starting at the high school level is actually having a set of these in the library for checkout. With the Chrome environment, they can still be filtered and everything and the students will be able to check those out on a nightly basis, you know, starting small to see where that is and if the need is there. The one nice thing about Google and the Chrome environment is it works on a phone, it's flashing a laptop, a Mac, it works on most things. So, if we use the GAF environment or the Google Apps for Education environment, it almost doesn't matter what the student has, doesn't have at home, but we would be able to provide for those who don't have something at home through their library.
Right, so with all of the things that we're using with Google, because it's all through the internet and I can access my files anywhere through any device, whatever, like I used to, like, oh, I had to carry around my flash drive and I had to worry about whether I had saved it on a certain place or a certain, now they just have access to all of that. When we do classroom walkthroughs on the Google form, I might do it on my phone, I might do it on my Chromebook, some people are on their iPad, some people are walking around with a laptop. We're all accessing the same material and able to edit each others, but we're on dramatically different devices.
Okay, I think I'm getting a clarification there. So, any machine that can internet access is capable of dealing with these issues, more or less. I mean, if I'm going to do it at home or I'm doing it in a classroom? Because, you know, the reason I'm asking that question is every meeting we approve gifts from BUA, mostly PTAs, which we are very thankful for, but I don't know that I've seen Chromebooks on that list. I've seen iPads, maybe, I mean, a lot, I mean, you know, to me it's iPads, but, you know, again, I just want to make sure that we're getting the right, giving the right direction if that's the case. So, and as long as that is available and you can access them, that helps me.
Yeah, I would say the first two or 300 Chromebooks that were in the district were all actually gifts at the two middle schools. Again, one of the reasons that their numbers are so low, that their ratio is, you know, that started almost two years ago where they were the first pilots of bringing in Chromebooks. But again, I still think we have more iPads than we do Chromebooks out there if we were to do an analysis of the network and, but we definitely, iPads are a lot more expensive.
You had, there's more what? iPads?
There are more iPads probably currently in the system than there are Chromebooks if we take all of the gifts over the last couple of years, yes?
Rod, one more question on this slide. Are these options that we have to choose from between the two different ratios or is it the goal for 15, 16 is to go free and then following or do you get down to two-and-a-half? Is it part of the plan or are these two different options?
No, it's kind of part of the plan, but again, these numbers could change. This is just, you know, to look at two different scenarios, how many more devices we're talking about to get to those numbers for you and approximately what it would cost for us to do those. Again, with some things from curriculum that might still be coming down this year, we still have end-of-the-year purchases, PTAs will be doing purchases, those ratios might come down, those numbers could possibly change, but I agree with Dr. Schuler, we don't really have an end goal right now. This was kind of a, you know, probably an attainable goal that we knew we could get to in two years if we had the right backing without setting it, you know, too high to where it's not attainable. And to always get down to that level where we think, we knew think they'll be like, we got it, we've got enough, thanks, just keep them coming. Hence to your first question, keep them refreshed so that they're in working condition, the things that we have.
Those are two different sets of numbers, right? I mean, one, getting to three is 200,000, getting to four is the other's quarter.
Right, it's about, you know, roughly 550 to 525 new devices each year. About, you know, once we get to three, we're about 545 or, I don't know, 550 devices away from getting to 2.5, does that make sense?
Okay.
After we get to three.
So, these numbers are added together, so in other words, you have to add another 190,000 on top of 187,000 to go from three to 2.5.
I would have definitely voted for the other one.
Yeah, correct.
We're not sure that it's only $3,000 more to go down to two-and-a-half.
Such a best value.
Okay, I'll move on. Another area that we looked at was classroom infrastructure. This is really as we talk about learning spaces and what's needed in the instructional area, I believe this came up in one of the last board meetings as well. A lot of the, you know, projectors, things that are in the classrooms were, you know, gifted PTA gifts sponsored by boosters and everything and we really appreciate everything they did to get us to where we are, but we really kind of looked at what, what does it mean to be able to instruct in 21st century? And we came up with a few things that are needed. One, definitely the wireless access in the rooms, projection and sound is needed, standard computing device for instruction, currently right now that is the desktop that's at every location, and then some type of a capture device for, you know, audio/video for doing Google Hangouts, but also the new ones can actually also work as a document camera instead of buying those Elmo document cameras and stuff, finding something with a multipurpose camera and audio recording device. Looking at that, when we evaluated all the rooms and researched with the principals what was needed, we currently have about 75 rooms that still are missing something, most, all projection, the document cameras and things are pretty much there, but we have about 75 rooms across the district. When we think about that, there's about 710 rooms, you know, that's 600 and some plus rooms that were, projection is there because of the PTAs and everything, though, you know, we'd like to be able to finish these last year's out and there are, is currently a desktop workstation in each of those locations. One of the things we'll be forwarded to be to finish out those rooms that don't have the standard, and again, there are smart boards, there are other things in some rooms that are, you know, plentiful in the district, but we don't think that is a necessity for every room. Definitely, you know, has, just like an iPad has its place in a certain classroom, a smart board might have its place in a certain type of instructional environment, but maybe not needed at all. Also, with the ability of iPads to become, if we all had the iPad projector and we could hand it around, no one has to walk up and touch a board, you touch the iPad and it can move. There's so many different changes in how we can do that type of projection, so really kind of moving forward with a different look, possibly using smart TVs in the rooms. The projection on those can last eight to 10 years instead of buying a bulb every year that the schools, you know, have to budget for that really does, you know, change the use of how we do projection and still is a nice, you know, visible screen in a room for projection and instruction, but those are really the things we're looking for, yes?
Good question on this. Is this, can we define classroom? Does this include spaces like labs, libraries, where there's a lot of technology in places where kids learn that may not be covered in this?
This right now is the instructional classroom areas. I think the part that you're talking about, when we talk about instructional spaces, things that might be addressed in more of the facilities plan, this is kind of what we need to do to get every classroom right now to a standard. And part of that moving forward is then, you know, also making educated guesses. As I look up, that projector's rather new, but in some of the rooms they are very old and we're still re-buying bulbs as, you know, a planned focus for the instruction of, if it's, if it's one of the older Dell projectors and the bulb breaks, we're going to get a different, we're going to either do a TV or a different type of a connection altogether. But I think when we're talking about spaces outside redoing bigger spaces, things like that, I think that's kind of more on the facilities plan and us being able to support that, of course, but not part of this plan.
Right, and that's what I was going to comment on is I see as we get down the road on this facility master plan, this particular bullet point of the five bullet points, this should be kind of just a initial goal, that we ought to bring those two together and maybe update this as necessary, if necessary, when we get through that facility master plan, to redefine this and also cover the other spaces.
Correct, and I think that is kind of the goal of this. Right now, we want to get everybody to the standard though and, you know, so that, as we're pushing things out and saying, we want you to start using this, we don't have in those 75 instructional areas right now, someone's saying, I don't have projection, I can't do that with my classroom, we need to finish that up.
And then before you go on, in response to that question, the, I guess I'm, you mentioned earlier about a technology committee. Who's on that committee? Is the board members on that committee or not?
The FIT committee?
The technology committee. I heard it referred to earlier as a committee.
No, I was probably talking to the FIT committee, the Future Instruction and Technology.
And that was, that was a committee that-
Yes.
-that Rod and Dave presented to us last, last spring when we were at the Technology Center. So, do we have one? Yeah. What about, I'm just kidding. The board or not the board?
Not the board, not the board.
Not the board, we have administrators and teachers.
Okay, I think there's a point where I believe technology is a significant part of the educational board and I think that maybe we should have a board member, a board committee on this in the future. I, that's my point, I'm trying to get it, because I think it's, you know, I'm hearing stuff about, you know, I want to make sure that if we spend $1 on a technology, it's going to reach whatever that ultimate goal is. And, you know, I'm hearing some stuff where we bought something and it may not be what we want it to be today, it's not accessing, you know, so I don't, I don't want to be making these mistakes of, I don't know if that's the right word, because technology changes constantly and I recognize that, but I think that we need to carefully evaluate the dollars we spend to buy the, the thing that will give us this vision that we don't even know what the vision is, you know, and I, you know, I, I think this is such an important committee, an important, you know, I'm a little, I'm going to alter, you know, let's get down, where's our peer group in this? Where are our peer schools that we always compare ourselves to? Where are they on these programs and so on? Because I, I want to make sure we're walking down the same path and that, you know, so we have, that's kind of my guiding vision of something here and, you know, I just think we need to be a little clearer, you know, again, I've been on the board, you mentioned two years ago something, I've been on the board just short of two years. And, you know, I, this has been a desire of mine for a long time and I, I, I don't know, I just don't feel like I'm there where we want to be at this point. And I, you know, and maybe it's the perception I have, but it's, you know, I wish we were further along and I wish we had, you know, when I hear we'd spent some money and now we're doing something different again, that troubles me and, you know, and again, I recognize there's technology changes, but, you know, I just, it's such a critical area because I think in five years, two years, eight years, we have to be a place and that place has got to be someplace and we have to be there competitive with everybody and so we have to think of that target and make sure we're getting there, so, you know, so I'm, this, this is an important, important area, so I'm really listening closely and I got a lot of questions.
Why don't we do this if it's okay? Let's go ahead and get through the presentation so we make sure we at least cover the pieces and then we'll come back and pick up, I think, a few of the questions, discussion points.
The next area is the operational technology systems. You know, this is really what we need to have the district running, the servers in the back, you know, in the, behind the walls that nobody sees and then the software that sits on them. Again, when we did things in isolation and look at them in silos, we fixed the things because they need to be fixed. This plan kind of now looks at it more progressive to look at the things as they come through. You know, when does the CIST need to be evaluated? When does the communication systems need to be evaluated? When do servers need to be updated so that we have all of those in the plan and works? One thing in this, in this little pocket that has not been ever been addressed is the print and copy solution. We still are an IP-based printing. I know we have over 900 printers out there and the average age is probably close to nine to 10 years on those printers. They've been workhorses, but going into a digital environment and really trying to move to that area, we need to look at maybe possible solution that could save us money in the long run and getting to something a little more managed approach. Future things to look at again, in my first year, we did the security cameras at the three buildings, again tying to the facilities plan or some work at the facilities is also automation solutions. We need to be ready for those things so that we're not behind on them. Part of this network upgrades and keeping these, the network where it is allows us to make those changes a little bit easier moving forward. Currently in this area, we're looking at human resource and business software, we looked at it a few years ago, finances have not been there to do this move. This is the other side of SIMS. Remember SIMS was our student information system, so this is now a 14-year-old program that we're running on an AS400. It is, again, I will say this, I said it with the CIST, it's a very reliable system, it's very robust, it doesn't do a lot of what other programs out there are doing and we do not have a print management solution. So, part of the future focus is in the, the actual master tech plan you'll see is evaluating, possibly looking at a CIST, our HR business solution in the next year, not knowing if we're going to be purchasing, but at least to have a target in mind of what we might be looking for for the 2016, 17, but beginning to this print management solution, starting with the elementary schools next year. Getting rid of the printers, putting in more of a print management solution, strategically placed multifunction things that don't print unless someone walks up to it, so it's not wasted paper all the time with everybody accidentally printing and not realizing they had done it, so. That's kind of on the, the technology side, system side. Reliability and stability has been a goal for the last couple of years, I think we've seen great goal gains in this. We have the generator finally going in this summer after doing all the work and getting the batteries and everything up to where this building will be completely covered and all systems in this building. A big part of that also was the reliability and stability of the service team, making sure that we have a quick turnaround time and that tickets are not sitting out there for a long period of time. Just some numbers to go over, three years ago when this was the first goal, we were at a 53-hour turnaround, last year we got it to 33, we're now at about 28, I have to put the .04, you know, just showed up and that one kid showed up. And also our response time is 1.87 hours. That is us being able to say, we read a ticket when it comes in at 1.87 hours, and again, I always have to refresh this, it's on 24-hour clock. So, if you talk about during the day, it's a lot less, but our system does not allow us to isolate just the hours of the workday. So, someone puts a ticket in at 4 o'clock or 5 o'clock on a Friday, you know, there's 40-something hours added until someone might read it on Monday, but we read those tickets and prioritize them so that we're taking care of things. We are prioritizing not first come, first served, but kind of looking at the ticket and saying, this is one individual issue and it might be on a specific device or this is an issue that's affecting one classroom that might have 180 kids coming through, we need to prioritize that ticket. We have, we're doing that in 1.87 hours on a daily basis. Future goals in this area would really be looking at doing, again, now maybe extending the battery backup to solutions at the buildings. Again, our systems would stay up in a power failure, but if one school itself went out, their systems would go down, so being able to keep their systems up for a little bit for those little 30-minute power blips we get, turns into a 30-minute power blip, a 15-minute restart, a 20-minute, you know, it turns into some time that if we had some systems in place in those buildings with some UPSs that would last a little bit longer. That's kind of a future goal, right now it hasn't really been an issue. I haven't even been able to test my new battery system yet. Looking at these priorities and, you know, when we got together with senior leadership and look at, you know, where they are priority-wise, the wireless infrastructure, it really is kind of the first one, it's changing the infrastructure, rooms and adding devices, we need those access points and everything to be switched out first. Then looking at the instructional areas, then looking at the student-to-device ratio and then finally the print management as we look at things that are, that we've put in this plan that are attainable here with, hopefully in the next year. Looking at the financial considerations and impact on this, right now in the Department of Tech Relocation Budget, we do have that first initial server lease, it was approved four years ago, coming off, that brought in a majority of the servers that are in the, in the room, that was a dollar buyout lease, so we own those servers now, they're still good for a few more years, but that money's now available. The capital purchases that we carried forward for the, the battery backup solution and then us reworking, you know, we are saving a little bit going to Gmail, not 91,000, but my new network manager has been able to find some other ways that we might be able to save money by putting some servers and some, some systems together and matching them together, we're saving some licensure there and changing, you know, just on how we pull things out and paying, signing up and paying for things for three years instead of doing it a year-to-year, which we'd always done, we can save another 91,000 or next year with those coming off, you know, have available in the Department of Tech Budget about 281,000. Looking at that and what the plan needs, you see right now the plan needs, you know- Looking at that and what the plan needs, you see right now the plan needs, you know, 629,000 based on the board areas above. With the 281,000 and grant assistance next year with Title I being carried over, we're still trying to find 190,500 to take care of this. Now, some of those funds and some of these numbers include things in the student access devices, it includes a personnel person, where we might be able to get by without doing that, so we could decrease about 30,000. We have not looked at possibly the E-rate refund, because that's a revenue, not an expense, could offset some of that 190,000. Part of that wireless infrastructure is an access management piece that we would really, it's not a need to have, it's a really, really, we really want to have it, but we could probably do the wireless access and add that maybe in another year and still use pre-shared keys and people logging in a different way. But we think it's a very doable plan, it's attainable in this very first year where we're at now, probably doing some strategic planning moving forward, seeing what other monies could possibly come in, other solutions, other departments to help offset some of these costs and, you know, hopefully make this happen.
Glad you mentioned, sorry, I mentioned with respect to classroom needs and new projection equipment and so forth, trying to give a history of, if you would, about the issues with bulbs in some of the classrooms and how they were first installed and how much they cost and why we need to replace them, and that it wasn't a case of a mistake being made, but just because of the change in technology.
For when we buy bulbs, you mean?
Yeah, the whole classroom projection issue that you brought up and how we need to upgrade that.
Oh, okay, I mean, it's more of a total cost of ownership. Right now, let's say we can put a whole TV, 65-inch TV in for around $1,000 to $1,100 in a room, which the 65-inch TV in a classroom is probably the same amount of viewable space they're getting on some of those smart boards as it is. Currently, right now, the older projectors only had, I don't want to get real number here, but about 2,000 hours of life out of them, which might be about a year and a half in a classroom and every, just like anything else. You get 2,000 with the first bulb, with the second bulb, you're getting 1,900, then 1,800, then 1,700. And we're buying those at 180 to $200 at a time for each replacement. You'll have some projectors that might need a new bulb every year. Well, in the course of a few years, you've actually paid for probably a new TV that doesn't need a bulb for eight. They're lower emissions, there are the energy start settings, all of that. You're also not buying the projector. You know, projectors that we buy are around 600, so you've already spent, if you buy a projector and two bulbs, you've spent the amount of TV in three years that you could get eight years out. So it's kind of in that refreshes, changing that, projection is the important thing we need, not the type of projection.
And my point is, when was that equipment originally purchased and installed in classrooms? And when have these TVs that you described become available? This is new equipment that you're talking about?
You know, TVs probably started getting popular about two or three years ago. I think it's more the cost that has become more attainable. A 50-inch TV in a classroom is not very viewable. When you get to the 60 and 65-inch, for a price point, you know, your return on your investment is a few years away instead of four or five years away. Which sometimes it's a little bit easier to say, yes, let's do this, because we know in two years, two and a half years, three years, we're saving money compared to in five years. But as you've seen, I mean, look at Best Buy now, TVs are $400 for some of these. The TVs we're looking at are smart TVs where they have apps on them and they do a little bit more than just, than are just a TV, but it's a, it's a solution that you see in department stores, banks, a lot of places. Now, this kind of projection is becoming more prevalent than that type of projection.
And when were these projections with the bulbs installed in classrooms?
That's every year.
No, no, originally.
Since I've been here, we've probably been doing 30 or 40 a year. So, prior to my being here, some of the schools already had them. A lot of them, they're attached to the smart board, so they came with the smart boards. Again, without us, you know, really overseeing that, kind of more working with the PTAs, it was kind of done, I mean, but some of them could be seven, eight years or more. I know a lot of the Dell projectors and old NECs that are out there. We would keep these models, any 80-series or 90-series, I mean, we would still keep it and replace the bulb for another year or two before we would say, let's, you know, the solution for that one is a new TV.
Could you talk a little more about, you're saying that the teachers and it's not needed in every class for every student, and just talk a little more about that as far as a breakdown with the high schools. I would think, like, you're right, I mean, every department's different, every, and like, the squeaky wheel, who's saying like, oh my gosh, if I only had this and this. Is that how we're prioritizing needs about who needs what first?
A few years ago, three years ago, when lots of people, and we were really trying as a district, talking about going one-to-one and talking about having the traditional approach of having, hey, I'm in seventh grade and here is my whatever device and I take it home and go with me. And part of that was, because everything that I stored was either on a flash drive or on that device, it became very difficult to do that. As we store things in the cloud and we can go anywhere with any of our devices and access still a lot of our things, that need to have the device, I don't even use the same device throughout the day. Like, I'm on my desktop, I'm on my Chromebook, I'm on my phone, you know, to do the same kinds of things. And some of the lessons learned from some of the districts that went one-to-one, didn't really spend quite a bit of time talking about how to have a device, it means that instruction needs to be different, because just to get a Chromebook to do a worksheet, you know, that was a really big expenditure to do the same thing that we've always done. And as you talked with some of the districts that have had more success with that, they went in a little bit slower, I really talked about how it needs to impact instruction. And when I talk with some of the other people that have similar jobs that I do, they're like, tell me about this thing you did with instruction, where you really focused in, what do you want your learning environment to look like? Oh, we wish we would have done that before we purchased all the devices, because otherwise you're getting devices to do the same thing that you've always done, and it's a really pricey new tool to do that. You also asked about, well, how are we deciding at the high schools who gets access to what? Right now, it has been going through who's up for a textbook adoption, but with the new Chromebooks that we've just given to the high schools, we did spend quite a bit of time with them talking about what's the best way to give staff and students access to that, because obviously there's a lot more demand at all of our levels still than what we have devices for. And it is a building, it is a dilemma, speaking as a previous principal, like, okay, well, you don't want to just house them and have checkout on every Tuesday that some class is going to get it, because you're going to need to have a device every day for a while to really have that learning environment that we talked about. And so, some of the high schools are, some of the departments are looking at, okay, which teachers are really ready to do this? And they're writing proposals of who's going to have access and who's going to have these Chromebooks during the first nine weeks of the year. Are they going to move then to another part and really putting them where they will be used? And then, not only, like, you can't be, here's the teacher and she has her sets, because, okay, what if she doesn't teach third period and sixth period? You don't want Chromebooks just sitting there and not having anybody have access to them. So it does get a little bit difficult to schedule all of that. But since a device does not belong to a student, does not belong to a teacher, does not belong to the math department, you are allowed to use those in a lot more creative ways because they can all be shared. So, we still need more devices, a lot more devices. But we are looking and finding creative ways to have them be shared, especially since we're not doing one-to-one and you only have that, and then that device is not allowed to be used in any other class or any other student. We also do want to have, and I know Rod already made the point, but I want to emphasize it again, because we all worry about the students that do not have devices at home, that when we get to a little bit higher amount of devices here, we do anticipate having those to be able to be checked out and not just on a day-by-day basis, but on a regular basis for some of our students that do not have access to devices at home. If they don't have internet at home, then... There are some companies, there's a Comcast that runs a really great deal for those families that are at a certain level in their income, so that it becomes pretty affordable.
The, you know, I'm hearing, first of all, you're talking about E-rate revenue, okay? Where's that on the page nine chart? Is that one of the grants or the available from the DOD?
We're not showing that, that's not, so, all you're seeing up there, Jim, are costs. We're not showing a potential revenue offset. And I guess, you know, the reality is, the E-rate reimbursement is not certain yet, and so I don't want to show that as a potential revenue offset until we know that that source is coming in. So I guess what we're trying to, trying to show you there in terms of the cost, where, you know, if you were supportive of doing the things that we've identified for next year, what would be the, kind of the worst, I should say, worst case, but what is the maximum cost you would incur as a board over and above existing budget for this year?
I think, again, you know, when we talk about the budget, I'm hearing mixed things. I can't, I can't quite sort them out. And it's, on one hand, I'm hearing that we don't want to go to one-on-one, I understand that, and we don't have enough devices to do that. And then on the other hand, we're, I'm hearing we have bottlenecks a bit because we don't have enough. Okay, I, you know, I'm hearing both of those things. So I guess I'm trying to vision what we, what we need to spend, I guess, you know, and I see this chart on page nine, which is, you know, it's like a half a percent of the budget. It's not a big number. I mean, it's only a piece of something for starters. I don't think we, I don't know what the total technology budget is, so I can't get a handle on that. But, you know, I guess I'm concerned that we are in a position, I guess our, my goal is to say that we need to have the ability to have access through whatever up here to every number of devices we have in the future. That's so critical, we have to be there. And then, you know, as we get devices, we get devices and we can deal with funding those. But we have to have the inner core there. And I, I thought we were there, but I, I'm hearing a little bit tonight that these boxes here are the ideal boxes. So, you know, is that part of this funding plan that we have here or not?
They've, when those were bought, those were, you know, they were the top. I think we could make it where they wouldn't, but we'd have to turn the internet off for everybody except for the devices we own. But I don't think we want to do that. We want to be able to have more and more throughput. And also, even in the last three years, the amount of digital media has changed to where something that had 300 megabit access through it is now no longer enough. Four years ago, we were 100 megabit everywhere in the district. So it's just, it's actually just a change of the access point. I mean, those are going to have to be come, as other districts have found out, I think both the neighborhood districts have already done this. St. Charles started, they've already refreshed all of their access points at least once, if not twice. Ours, we're all new, we're on our first refresh of access points to keep up with the change of demand that's out there.
In that regard, do we, is this page nine funds available versus plan?
It's on page three, Jim. Look at page three, that's where the access plans are.
Okay, I mean, is that part of the, again, I'm confused on the funding, I guess, is my point. Is that part of this plan that we need to fund or, you know, I'm confused why that chart and that chart, are they one of the same? I don't, I'm trying to get a handle on that.
I'm not following you though, so take me which part is not.
All right. I'm saying that we, we're talking about not having the infrastructure in place, okay? We don't have the right device to access all the things we need access to. And whether we have enough devices at this point in time is another question. Okay, so I'm trying to understand what that cost is to have the infrastructure. Is that in the page nine presentation?
That's the 280.
Can you look at this chart, Jim?
I see it. Well, I'm looking at, I'm just trying to understand.
It's the top, it's the infrastructure that's 280, it's about $210,000 per access points, about 105 for each of the high schools. That's just, again, all we need to do is buy an access point, switch it, and increases the number of access points at the high school level. And then, part of it is a controller piece, which again, gives us the educational side that we can control what goes through those access points more easily.
Okay, so under that assumption then, this funds available versus plan, are we incorporating this into next year's budget? Do we have it in this year's budget? I'm trying to now relate it to the real world. Are we talking about this what we need to do? Are we needing to fund, or are we, we're already scheduling to do it? Again, that's my question.
Yeah, so, Jim, what that page means, I think the page that you're looking at, is that in order to fund the recommendations that we've given for next year, the total cost of doing those things is 629,000. What we've identified for you are places out of this year's budget where we can reallocate dollars for next year so that the 629 are not new dollars over and above what you're spending this year within the budget. So to do everything that's on here, yes, you would need to allocate an additional 190,000 in the budget next year to fund these technology pieces.
Okay, now, okay, now I understand that. Does that mean that this gets done in the summer between now and the start of the next school year? Or is this something that's done during the school year of 15, 16, I guess it would be, I don't know?
Yeah, I think your, all your infrastructure components would get done over the summer. So if you approve them as part of next year's budget, those pieces would get done. The device piece, especially with Chromebooks, we can buy those at any point in time. So they don't have to necessarily be purchased prior to day one of school. The turnaround time if you're buying Chromebooks is pretty quick now, so it's not, it's not generally been a problem. But I believe that the goal would be to build those things into the budget so that we can ultimately get the majority of this work done over the summer in anticipation for next year, certainly on the infrastructure side when you're talking access points.
So how do we sticker this to be included in the budget, is my point? I guess, you know, this is a very, again, significant issue. Again, you know, we're going to talk about the budget in, I don't know, five months, whatever. How do I know this is going to be in there, I guess, is my point. I just want to make sure we, you know, we followed this through and make sure that these dollars are a priority in that budget process and identified and so on in the budget process for next year, or next summer, really. That's what concerns me more, so how do we do that?
I think as a board, you, again, you're not approving anything on it tonight, but I think that's, that's part of the goal of this discussion, is as we plan the budget for next year, I would assume that technology is an area of priority. You've established it through, through a goal. I guess that's what, what, you know, I think I hear your feedback, I think that's what we're looking for from other board members, is as you look at this, is would this be a priority for you as we're building that budget for next year? Are there any things, any pieces of this that we've included that would not be a priority for you, would not be interested in seeing us, you know, spend, spend money on? The one other thing I do just want to comment on as well, because I think we can tie these two pieces together. Brad, you asked a question before. When we talk about that device-student ratio too, I don't think that those are necessarily have to be like mutually exclusive options. So, what we show you in the plan for next year is a plan that would bring that ratio down to three to one. Again, what we don't account for in that are devices that Faith is purchasing perhaps this year out of curriculum dollars, whatever she bought this year. So, you know, Faith has already purchased 60 devices related to health. If any of those devices are over and above what's in here, so it is possible as well that, that in funds for next year, you might be able to fund through devices enough to get us to a two-and-a-half to one ratio at elementary and middle school and three to one at high school. So, we showed you what are two options, but, you know, again, I guess it's sort of assuming that if there is additional monies that could be built into the budget or could be, you know, be reallocated as we continue to look for areas that, you know, that perhaps we can make some shifts. If that's the priority area, we'll continue to try to attack that two-and-a-half to one ratio as aggressively as we can as well.
And I think that gives some of the things that I'm struggling with in this, is we keep using this ratio, and everybody wants one-to-one, not here, but every school this district I've worked with. And I think for us, you know, a ratio at the elementary school level is different than the ratio at the high school level. I would like to start thinking about this plan being, what's the direct ratio at the elementary school level? What is it at the middle school? What's, what's the end held out at the high school level? Because it's not one ratio. You know, we don't need every kindergarten student to have a... You know, we don't need every kindergarten student to have a iPad. But we probably need, at some point, every high school student conceivably to have a device. And maybe that's in five years. But it seems to me that thinking in terms of breaking the ratio down at the different levels really helps us get to the end vision, so I...
Which you do have, so in that, if you go back within the, the presentation, Rod does show that, that ratio by level as well. So you, you have it?
Yeah, this big chart?
Correct. You, you have it, have it broken out, I guess, just in terms of, of ultimately looking at, at options for, for purchasing? We, we showed that as, you know, as a, as a goal to get everybody down to, to a consistent ratio, at least as a starting point for next year.
But those don't represent goals.
No, that's not a goal. I'm just...
Those are just where we are right now.
Correct.
So if we look at this technology, that's our technology plan, you know, at some time in the future, maybe it's at the end of the 2018 school year, 2017, 2018 school year, does it make sense to have a student access to devices ratio for the high school level equal to something, the middle school level equal to something, and the elementary school level? You know, what, I'm kind of with Jim.
Right.
You know, what's, what's the end goal? And then we could start planning what the investment's going to be and how to get there.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I guess, I, I would answer that question in the same way that I did before, in, in that, I'm not sure what the end goal is, Brad, and I'm not, not doing that to duck setting a goal, but, but I think at this point, if we were to, if we were to set an end goal, to some degree, it would be a little bit arbitrary. We would be picking a number, and we might be picking a number that sounds good to people for whom technology obviously is a, is a, is an area of priority. But for me, technology is one of many instructional resources that we have available in the district to help kids learn. And, and so, it's important to me, I think it's a good investment for us, but I don't want to overinvest. I, I mean, I, I do think that, that candidly, you, you know, that you can overinvest in technology because it's trendy and it's the thing to, to do, and I, I don't want to overinvest. So I'm not ducking a goal, I'm not sure what that end goal is going to look like. I agree with you, that it may wind up looking different by level. So we may hit a point where we, we do say, we've kind of hit that universal access point at the elementary school, and it's at two and a half to one, and we're good, as long as we keep refreshing. But high school, we got to keep, keep digging a little bit further. But I, I, I don't, I could set one, so honestly, if the goal, if you, board gave me feedback to say, "We want you to set a goal," do it.
Maybe, maybe a better way to phrase my question would be not, you know, here's the ideal goal we want to get to, which I understand we can't really define that, but maybe the question is, you know, by the end of 2018, where do we need to be? And Rosemary's been...
Yeah, I think Rosemary has something that maybe could get us off the, I think she's got something that could get us kind of off of this train.
Oh, okay, now that's a big, that's a big, now the pressure's not, well, yeah, so, so what I was going to say is, this really reminds me of a discussion that we had years ago, when we spent a lot of time about seat capacity. And what was seat capacity for a classroom? Was it at a school? Was it at an elementary level? Was, and, and it was our architects, actually, who helped us get off of that and talk about program capacity. So that, you know, a room that teaches art is very different in its capacity needs to a science lab, to an elementary classroom. I don't, I don't think I've ever heard any of this kind of jargon out there in the education world, but maybe District 200 ought to start talking about technology in terms of program ratio, rather than device ratio, you know, rather than a device ratio per student. Maybe we should be talking about, are we at 100% of our program need ratio, 50% of our program need ratio, whatever it is? So that if there's, you know, classrooms that need to have that for every student, we've got it. If there's a gym class that doesn't need it at all, we don't have it. Just then, we could invent something. But I think trying to whittle down to a number, two to one, one to one, three to one, doesn't, doesn't do it, more or less, if, if you understand what I'm saying. Did, did I get you on?
No, you got, you got us off the train, and I appreciate that you got us off the train, and I am going to miss that once you're gone. But, but I was, as we were having this conversation, I was thinking the same thing. In my view, the definition of being technology-rich is when you need a device, you have it. And if that number's two to one, one to one, 1.5 to one, I don't care. I just want to have the device when I need it. And when I need it, I need it, I don't want to have to wait for it. So I, I mean, to me, that's the definition of being, you know, in an appropriate technology place. So, so I, I don't think, you know, that one to one is necessarily a goal, I don't think one and a half to one, two and a half to one. I think to have my iPad when I need it, my Chromebook when I need it, if I have it when I need it in my classroom, to me, that's the definition of being in a, the right spot in technology, and it's based on our program. There's, there's no, if the answer was about it, in, in my mind. I mean, because like Dr. Schuler said, otherwise, we're picking an arbitrary number, give me the magic number, you tell me. Is it one and a half to one? Is it one, you know, you could talk to six different people in the technology business, and they'll give you six different numbers, maybe seven or eight. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of my thinking, is right along those same lines, is that if I have the devices that I need to support the program I'm trying to deliver, I'm good.
And the only people that can tell us that are the teachers. And so somehow, and, you know, they probably don't even know what they don't know, because it's going to change, oh my gosh, a new app came out, or a new thing, and there's always the new thing, but, I really, it has to be drilled down to what they think we need now, and it is totally different at every department, every plan.
Well, and I think that's the beauty of what our district has done in terms of putting together this FIT team, because you've got the right people talking about what they need to deliver the program that we're trying to deliver, and we're trying to stay, it sounds to me like what Rod has presented to us tonight is a way to kind of maybe stay a little bit ahead of the curve, so that, so that, you know, we, we plan for these devices, we bring in these devices, we have an understanding that the curriculum department will bring in, and other devices, we're trying to, trying to just kind of stay ahead of the curve, try and anticipate the need a little bit, and, and make sure that we have the devices that we need when we need them. So, I don't know if I'm oversimplifying things, but...
It's on.
Let me, one, one thing, because I, so, we have a live conversation here about the ratio piece two, and I guess, we, we didn't introduce that concept of the ratio, device to student ratio, to obviously confuse this discussion now. But I think as, when you made a decision as a, as a board, you know, a little over a year ago, that one to one wasn't necessarily the direction you wanted to pursue, my goal in introducing this ratio is to give you a way to track progress that you're making in terms of incorporating more technology into the system, and into the system tied to what FIT and what your instructional leaders are saying that, that we need. So, again, I, I don't want to get too hung up in that, that ratio, it wasn't the, the concept of it, but I wanted to introduce some metrics so that you have a way of watching, you know, the, the progress that's being made. And I guess also, at some point, when we know that we do kind of hit that sweet spot in terms of the ability to deliver instruction in the way that it is, I think you need a way of kind of quantifying what is that sweet spot look like. Because I, I think otherwise, you know, it's, it's been hard to sustain that over time, you know, or, or see it. So it, it was not, that, that metric wasn't to, like, confuse the conversation, again, or, and, or suggest, like, you know, that, that, you know, the, the goal's got to be written around that. It was just to put some way to kind of quantify, where are we at, where are we headed, and how do we watch that work over time, but...
When I sat through the first presentation that the Future and Instruction and Technology Chairs presented to Rod DeBoer last May at the Technology Center, the emphasis then was, as I understood it, is that technology is to aid instruction, and that's the goal. Technology we need has to improve, educate, improve instruction in the classroom. And you came out with a plan where you were going to introduce Chromebooks to the buildings on a test basis, to test them out, and then deliver to us a report in the spring, should have done here, on what you recommend. And I have heard, I've, I've come around so much more since then, to this idea that the technology we need to adopt and implement in this district must enhance and improve instruction. From what I've heard today, I like the plan that you presented. I'm encouraged that we're doing this in a reasonable, intelligent, and responsible manner, that's both instructionally appropriate, but also physically and financially appropriate for what we can do. And I think this is a good plan, I endorse it, and I would like to see incorporated into the budget, if that's the sort of feedback that I'm giving to you.
Rod, my questions are pretty easy. They're not going to get, this is what we debateable. I'm back on the infrastructure, infrastructure and wireless access, and you made, made mention of increasing the accessible bandwidth. Where are we going from and where are we going to, number one? Number two, how are we making that determination? Are we seeking outside consultants to help us with that? And three, where is that cost landing? Because that's, there's probably going to be the monthly operating expense to grow that bandwidth, and where, where does that number land, and what is that number?
The number is those currently have 300 megabytes throughput, throughput internet bandwidth can go through that access point, whether it be 30 devices or 50 devices connected to it. The new access point will allow one gigabit connection through it, that is our limit, as it is. So there is no new internet cost, it is just switching out the access point with one that allows, has two connections to it, and it allows, so three times more throughput through that one access point, all devices that connect to it share that bandwidth.
And on the next slide, it was infrastructure and access. You made mention on the elementary, we had 100% Wi-Fi, does that mean we don't have wire, we don't have wireless there, is that what you're suggesting?
No, it, it's, it's covered at 100%, that was the original goal, but at the middle and the high school level, when we did the plan a few years ago with CDW, we put actually access point in the classrooms. All schools have 100% coverage, but the access points in the elementaries are down the hallways, outside of the door of three or four rooms. So those three or four rooms share an access, you know, thinking they might have 10 devices in each room, not putting, you know, 30 devices in each room. Taking these down, we'd be able to move those into the rooms and put additional in the rooms, so they're actually inside the classrooms now at the elementary. But, no, they have a, they have the exact same coverage as the middles and the high schools, they just don't have as much of it to connect to as many devices currently.
And then, that's, that's the reason you're going to be moving those access points and adding them to rooms? Okay, perfect. On that classroom infrastructure, I just had a question. Has any data been gathered to assess the teacher use of, of the technology or the network in the classroom? Someone mentioned earlier that that's the most important thing, I was just curious if we've done any, not we, if you guys have done any data collection on usability at the teacher level in each room?
For projection?
No, just... Just, it was called, "This is basic classroom infrastructure needed to deliver instruction in a 21st century learning environment." Identified needs for classroom instruction areas, and you listed some items. I'm just saying, as it stands today, do we know how, how much the devices or the technology they have today they're using? I mean, have we ever assessed that?
No, I mean, I would, I mean, I know we're doing some of the walkthroughs, but I mean, I would say, there is no tracking devices on those, I would say a lot of it is quantitative. This, this, the list of this equipment that came out, came out from, you know, committee work, talking with other professionals, looking at other, and again, that's where, I mean, you don't see smart boards on there. I mean, and that is something that, again, is used in some, but not all areas. We think these are the critical. If you were to ask, if there's a projection in the classroom, it's probably on 100% of the time, if they have projection. Are they always using the capture and video device? Maybe not, you know, certain parts of the day when it is needed, when they need to show from a book or something. So we think these are, I don't want to say the minimum, I think that's the wrong word of the basic, but we think these are what's needed to instruct in 21st century. There's too many times we do need to get to projection, or capture device, or connect with an outside world, you know, globally with, with a camera. If you want to add up the walkthroughs you've been doing?
Well, we go through and walk all the classrooms in the district, so I don't have, this is how many times, can't give you a percentage, but definitely at the middle school and the high school level, it's rare to go into social studies, science, or math classes that you don't have the projection happening, either whether they're using assistance with lectures or they're showing videos or snippets of those kinds of things. I'm also seeing a big increase at the middle school level of students having devices and working collaboratively with each other on that. I don't see as much students having devices in the elementary classrooms, and, and some of that is the time of day that I'm really targeted in there. I'm in there during guided reading time, and a lot of that, that still happens with books. So I, I can tell you that, and I wish I had percentages, and I don't, but that there's a dramatic increase, especially since we've been working on the collaborative creative piece of how often I walk in, and there are students that are in control of the device, not just the teacher in control of the device to assist with a lecture.
This may not be a fair question for tonight, but it's been about a year, I think, that we've had any updates on Synergy. And a year ago, there was serious consideration about replacing that system. And I guess we were also, part of that transaction was to then use their HR component, I thought they had an HR component, maybe not. But I guess one question is, how are we doing the Synergy a year later, because it's been very quiet? And B, if we do go down that HR platform, it'll be another company, is that correct?
That'd be correct. Synergy did not have a, a product, one of our service providers that was not the middle company that really made the messes, but our local supported another product. But we would reevaluate everything. I mean, the products have changed in three years since we, we lasted that. As far as Synergy goes, I mean, even last year, I think at the end of the year, we did talk that there was not a lot of issues, and, you know, we kind of suspended the idea of looking at another product, was it growing pains? We do know the implementation was horrible with that, with that one company. But we really truly didn't have many issues, other than isolated issues with an individual grade book or something, one person. There's no real global failures in the product in the last two years. I'm never going to say everything is always perfect, but I have no plans to change Synergy.
And I just got one question, last question, and Jim mentioned earlier. Every year, we have a, a budget set aside for technology, correct? And what is that now, in our current budget?
Well, if I give a number, is it good? It's around 2.3 million. That includes copiers, and I mean, includes everything that we control, it's about 2.3 million for the total budget.
That does not include personnel, though? So the, the tech budget, no. Bill, what is the total, you know, the total, I'm not sure, is that three...
Yes, the staffing adds another million, I think. It's 2.34, I believe. 2.5, around 2.34.
One final question. The, I'm going to go home tonight, and I'm going to, probably not tonight, but I'm going to look at the booklet I got last year like this. Can you tell me what's changed in the year, what I'm going to see that either disappeared or has been solved in that year of time?
No, I mean, I would say this, the Vision 2018 really kind of drove this, with Jeff's leadership, this is kind of more of a, all pointing in the same direction. Some of that stuff last year still looked at isolation, isolation of some of it, most of it is all still there, it's just maybe a more comprehensive and realistic plan to get there. The big things last year were the HR business solution was the print management was on there, access points was on there, there was a little bit more on server work. It looked a little bit further out, it looked at things three years out, implementing different things, and I think really kind of looking at it and really having the instructional environment kind of push where the thing goes, and we can evaluate it each year, this type of a structure and a plan allows us to look at it each year, and it might change, but those five big areas probably won't change for us to always be ready for what's next, and being able to apply it at instructional level, at the classroom level, infrastructure level, what systems we need to support it, and how well we can support it personnel-wise, are kind of the big five areas. Those weren't identified last year. So it's kind of, taking those concepts, but really kind of looking at it to a, I don't want to go back to the device ratio, but that's a newer concept. Before, it was still going to be, you know, Park kind of drove some of those laptop purchases before, and now I think we have a different, let's bring things in because we need them instructionally enough, because we have to take tests on them. So a little different mentality there.
My last question. What is our plan for the HR and finance software? I noticed it wasn't on the priority list on that one slide.
It's in the chart. It's in the chart for this year to really more look at it. That's a long process to look at it for a few months. We'd have to get HR, people on board, we'd have to get, so into the next year is bringing in a few of those companies. I don't know if it's an RFP, or if it's a, they had selected two or three finals the last time. At this point, it probably is an RFP process that'll take us through the year to where we'll be probably presented next year at this time, you know, to do an early spring adoption to be ready for the next fiscal year. But it's not financially in this plan right now until the next year.
But it's still a priority?
It still is, yeah. It's just a longer process. You can't turn the dime on that with billing and everything else going right away.
It's not financial priority this year, I guess is where it sits.
Okay, good discussion. All right, Dr. Schuler, you ready to switch gears?
We are. I'm going to talk more in the more part. So, the second point of discussion tonight at the H- meeting is the goal that you set at the beginning of the year around exploring alternate sources of revenue. And so, I think fair to say that from the point that the board at the beginning of the year set this goal around exploring alternate sources of revenue, that's not changed. We're continuing to pursue that goal. But I think the one, the one thing that's kind of provided a little bit of a detour into some of those discussions has been the discussion around Senate Bill 16, now Senate Bill 1, that has really put us in a little bit of a defensive mode in being able to keep what we have. There's no alternate source of revenue that would recoup the loss that we potentially face under, you know, some of those legislative changes. And so, I just wanted to kind of state that upfront. That's not really a stated part of the presentation tonight is to talk about Senate Bill 1, but that certainly has been a bit of a detour. But our goal tonight is, Bill's just going to walk you through what I think are, I shouldn't say widely recognized, but what have been recognized as some alternative sources of revenue that districts should issue. Some of these we're already doing. We either have, you know, some strategy in place or doing part of, others we may not be, and so I think kind of the goal in tonight is just to give you an introduction to this and out of discussion identify if there are any in particular that really as a board you're interested in us doing a deeper dive into, or candidly, if there are any that you as a board say don't really want to go there. That's not, you know, even if it did bring in additional dollars into the system, we're just not willing to kind of look that route. So, that's really, I think, the goal out of conversation tonight is just to kind of get a feel for what some of these are and, you know, what's your interest as we kind of further refine this goal forward.
Bill?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. I believe that the board has all received a copy of some of that background information that is included in this presentation, but really, the genesis of this is the community engagement process that we heard from our community, that going out and looking for alternative revenue sources was something that the district should consider, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, incorporated into our goal, into the Vision 2018 plan. I'm going to run through a number of different things here, and a lot of them, you know, I think we're already, you know, in play on what we're doing as a school district. But I first want to mention, and I know it was part of the topic of discussion through the technology discussion with our PTAs, but I think we need to mention upfront that we have groups out there, obviously, that do an incredible amount of work for the school district and students in this district, and I named three of them right here that I think require, that, you know, we talk about that before we even go into some of these items. And I just put up some yearly estimates, approximate of what type, what the school district sees in the way of donations on behalf of these groups, and I don't think I need to belabor it, because I think the board is obviously very cognizant as they see all of these come through as donations and approve and accept those donations on behalf of those groups, but I think it's obviously, as I go through, I think it was important to mention those groups. Some of the strategies that are out there, and, you know, educational foundation, I listed the District Board Foundation previously, but one of the strategies that's out there is work cooperatively with a, with a foundation or group that, and again, we have one that exists, it's a separate 501(c)(3) group that would work with the school district and invest in school educational programs, grant scholarships, you know, grant for projects and scholarships. It really serves as a conduit between the community and the school district, promote partnerships with the local business community, as well as balance the fundraising activity that's going to occur. Another strategy that's out there are academic extracurricular fees. The board has asked to approve this fee list every year, so you're well aware that a lot of the fees that are on this list, registration, technology, athletics, extracurricular, you know, all these fees currently exist within our school district in some form or another. We also offer a before and after school program, which as mentioned, is not really there as a fundraiser, but as a service to our parents and students, but it's another way, you know, another fee that's out there, another way to potentially raise funds for school districts. Sales is another one, and our, you know, the first few are really, the first three are really tied into our high schools. Our high schools do offer programs, or the capability for students to buy class screens, yearbooks, and we do actually have our logos trademarked, but obviously, we allow the use of our PTAs and booster clubs use it. Not all schools have trademarks or hopefully they keep up with them, but the high schools obviously are the big two. The next two, food catering and lease of kitchens, that's more of something you see in a self-op type of arrangement. We obviously will outsource this function, so there is some catering that goes on, mostly for in-house programs, but other school districts have been known to provide lunches for the Catholic programs, private schools, other school districts, and provide that catering to other schools as a revenue generator. And, you know, we, as a self-op program, we're really know that. Also, lease of kitchens, you can lease, it's hard to kind of talk a little bit about more about rentals, is leasing out the kitchen space to other groups to use as we offer, you know, we have full kitchen service in our high schools. The next one's a pretty big one, and one I think we really need to focus on is one of the possibilities that's out there, and that's advertising. You know, the district has in the past, for those that have been on the board for a while, we've done advertising agreements for scoreboards in the past, where scoreboards are, the Wheaton North High School football stadium scoreboard has got advertising, the Wheaton Warrenville South indoor main gym, basketball, and wrestling. Scoreboards also come with an advertising agreement where the scoreboards are purchased by the company, and then they sell the advertising to help pay back that cost to them. There's a 50/50 split, so we have done some type of advertising in that nature. But as was described in some of the information you saw, you know, there's the ability of, do we want to advertise on our website? Whatever, you know, a lot of websites carry advertising, that's obviously something. Newsletters that we put out, we have been contacted, even though we don't self-op our transportation, I have been contacted by companies asking if we want to sell advertising on the side of our buses. Again, we don't own them, but that's something that's out there as well. And then you get into gymnasiums and stadiums. Do we want to have Coca-Cola field, you know, red green field at Coca-Cola Stadium? You know, there's a lot of, we're seeing that start to happen, obviously, more and more around probably more the college and the professional level, but we're starting to see that work its way down to the high school level as well. So, those are, you know, the advertising, obviously, there's a great potential for revenue, but it's something that we as a district have to obviously consider, endorse it one way or the other, but there are, obviously, there is great potential there. Then you get into corporate programs, beverage contracts. The district does have a contract right now with Cessie that's expiring, we're going out for RFP. These contracts used to be much more rich when guidelines relative to nutrition and those type of things. We used to get marketing money upfront, the revenue, the commission money from the revenue of sales was much greater when the machines had different types of product that were available to our students. Wheaton Warrenville South has a direct contract with Gatorade, not a lot of money, but the product and things of that nature. So, those type of contracts are out there in the beverage world as well. Reward programs, box top, I'm sure everybody's probably heard from box tops from education. I throw out a Pop-Tart box at home without cutting off the thing, I get in trouble, so... So, anyway, those type of things generate, the schools, a lot of our schools are already doing those type of programs, shopping type of things. You have Target, you have Costco, you'll see up on the wall the big checks that they bring to school with those type of corporate programs, and I know a lot of our schools participate in those as well. And finally, another corporate option, which is one that recently is familiar to the Board of Education regarding cellular towers and providers that work with school districts to provide, or place towers on, mostly our, you know, football stadium seems to be the popular version because the poles are already there, and it's just a kind of, that would go on the top of a replacement pole. So, those are obviously something, some corporate type programs the school district could consider as well, and has considered. Rental facilities, the district does have a rental policy. We do have a fee schedule associated with that rental policy. We have different levels of rates based on what type of program or corporation or partner is trying to rent with our facilities. We rent to churches, we rent to private sports groups, we rent to a number of the, Pearson used to do all their testing in the school district, that's now become all online, so now they're not, that rental agreement has finally sunsetted, but the district does rent quite a bit. Our buildings are used by, obviously, by the schools quite a bit. They're used by the park districts. We have three governmental agreements that give the park districts the right access to our buildings, and it's a great relationship with those three park districts that we use our facilities. So, our facilities get a lot of use before we even get the rental door open. So, again, I think, but rental facilities is something we can look at as well to try and enhance that and maybe market that a little bit better. Colin Wilkie handles all the rentals and does a great job and works with our buildings and getting those type of rental agreements in place. Churches seem to be the biggest one right now because their usage day is probably our least usage day and availability is there, so a number of our facilities have those type of rentals. Finally, the last one is investments and grants, investment revenue right now. Obviously, we're, the district does invest our revenue, our funds, but interest rates are pretty low, and we obviously fall under regulations that were, you know, that make a lot of sense to protect the liquidity and safety of the money. And then grants, grants have dried up over time as the economy is somewhat soured over time, but we obviously access grants for our programs, special ed title, those type of things. But sometimes the grants that are out there that you look to, you go after, you'll spend more time in paperwork and staff time than you'll probably see in return on those grants, but the district does obviously take a look at those grants as well. We get, the recent ones probably are the DCEO grants we've had associated with our energy savings program, are probably the most significant grants that we've had recently. I went through all that really quick, but really what we want to talk and hear from the board about is what, you know, where are the opportunities based on some of the information that we provided, and where should we focus our time and attention as we look to find alternate revenue sources? Again, with Senate Bill 1 out there, pension shift, other things, there's obviously some big amount of time that's going to need to be spent to protect what we currently have, but at the same time, I think we're always looking for alternate revenue sources for the school district. Do I take questions or comments?
Bill, I have one question on the academic and extracurricular fees. Is consideration being given just to increase those? Because those were all itemized, you said that we're currently enjoying those fees, so we would be increasing those by some exponential number or whatever?
No, we are not, the board will be asked to approve the fees at the next meeting. We do not have increases at that time, but that's obviously a potential item, you know, that the Board of Education can look at. School districts have looked at a number of different ways of funding athletics, from pay to play, where there's a cost based on how much it costs to offer the program to, you know, we do look at our comparables to see how we rate as far as what we charge. I think we're in the ballpark right now with those fees, but we do, we are not recommending, or will not be recommending any increase in fees to the Board of Education for those.
Bill, I have one question. Some of your more larger and more successful 501(c)(3) organizations have a development director who's responsible for locating contributions and grants and sources of funds for the 501(c)(3). Are development directors, do school districts have, are there school districts who have development directors who primary responsibility is to do just that?
It's not uncommon for school districts to have a grant position, to seek out grants. Development director is probably a little bit different animal. I know school districts have also used lobbyists or, you know, for things at the state level to try and get state grants available to them, but I don't know, you know, if that type of position's out there, development director, I know you're familiar with.
Yeah, I mean, some tied to foundations. Jim, I do think that there are a couple of different arrangements that districts have, so depending on the size of the foundation that's supporting the district. There are educational foundations where the foundation itself employs a director that is paid out of the foundation. There are some foundations that have an arrangement with their school district where perhaps there is a development director and a portion of that salary is funded out of the school district operation, and a portion of it is funded out of, you know, the foundation itself, and then there are some foundations that are just completely volunteer run and base. So, that just really depends on oftentimes the size and success of the foundation itself.
I've seen other programs that, you know, I think are interesting, and, you know, you try to access your community, and, you know, one of the popular ones now are like, are called marathons or runs or whatever. You know, they raise a lot of money, you know, there's a lot of other organizations that are doing them. You know, I've seen dinner dance type things for alumni, and, you know, organized events that, you know, and there's silent auctions and so on. You know, and there's a lot of those in the community now, but we have a resource and a, you know, an alumni, I'll call it, that would be, you know, and I'm not looking at, again, you know, I think that, you know, parents with kids at school are doing these through PTAs, so I think our access would be more at that alumni association, I'll call it. And so, my question would be, do we have good access to alumni? You know, I don't know how we reach them, I guess is it, and, you know, in trying to develop some alumni relationship. And I think the byproduct of that, you know, golf outings is another one for alumni, and, you know, they kind of take the, somewhat the replacement of reunions, but they're more annualized and so on, and I think there, you know, we have the facilities around to be doing some of those. So, you know, I would like to see more action in that department. Now, how, you know, I think the, you know, you've got to start out slow with them, obviously, but, and then, you know, ultimately, you know, maybe we start getting some, you know, estate type money, too. You know, that endowment, I'll call it, you know, is a byproduct of accessing alumni, and I don't see that on there, and, you know, I think that's a kind of the key core group of people that we can, you know, hopefully get to, you know, which I would like to see some more attention spent on.
I mean, I have a question about what does the board want to see also in terms of this activity? Because, you know, at the foundation level, we've talked about a lot of these things. We're doing events, we've all got an invitation, I think, to the pizza, pizza party that's coming up, that's going to have a silent auction as well within that, that's on April 13. We've talked about, you know, endowment funds and all that, you know, as we get going. So, I guess my question is, do you want to see that occur within that foundation? Or do you want to see that occur, you know, within the district? Because the district is a separate entity from the foundation. I mean, then those funds could all flow through the foundation, and typically, having been a development director, the goal of any development director is to fundraise three times their annual salary. So, if you're paying, if you're paying a fundraiser $25,000 a year, then...
Which pays somebody a million.
Well, yeah, there you go. Yeah, but it doesn't work that way. But I mean, that person's goal is to raise at least three times, you know, what they make. So, you know, our foundation is truly in its Renaissance infancy, and so we're trying to rebuild it with board members and volunteers. So, that is underway, but I guess my question would be, you know, do we want to put some resources towards, you know, toward that effort? I mean, Erica's already our staff rep to that, and it's been, it has been a little difficult... little difficult, I think, to get to alumni for that organization. Am I correct, am I speaking out of turn?
Yeah, I think-
I think Pamela's making some strides, but I'm not sure how successful she is.
Absolutely, I think the, reaching out to the alumni requires a very targeted and organized effort that requires a good amount of time and dedication to that, and it is important, and we've had a couple of meetings with some people in the community who've expressed that same desire, and there are a lot of pockets of alumni, people come back to Wheaton because this is a great place to live and a great place to raise your family. We know that there are alumni out there. It's, to Barb's point, having someone dedicated and committed to organizing and coordinating that effort and being able to spend the time that that deserves and needs.
So, as I listen to our community in terms of the alternate revenue stream, I don't think they were really wanting us to sit here and think of discrete opportunities for it. I think what they were looking for was developing, I, the key word there was stream, I think, not, you know, do this or do that event or do that event. In other words, they'd like to know there's a regular stream of income that is coming from other sources besides, let's say, what, what we can get through tax dollars and such. It might not always be one particular source, but that there's a sort of a coordinated effort ongoing to keep that stream full, and when one source dries up, go out and find another source, all of which argues to me for a position in the district of something like a development director, but maybe broader than a development director. Development director maybe is going out looking for donations, but this position would maybe be somebody who also goes out looking for partnerships, business partnerships, who goes out beating ground for some rentals, who goes out looking for advertising opportunities. So maybe development isn't exactly the way to, to look at it, but then who would also have time to sort of cultivate the alums and eventually get some endowment money. I, I just think that, you know, in this day and age, there, there are so many groups out there doing individual things that unless we have somebody that has a focus on just doing that, I think all we're going to get is what comes to us, we're not going to go out perhaps and develop more. You know, what, what, who walks in the door to rent a facility, we'll, we'll get, but maybe we won't get somebody who hasn't thought of our buildings as a rental opportunity. You know, who already thinks of us to give us money, we'll get, but not maybe somebody who hasn't thought that this might be a good investment. I, I'm just suggesting that, and, and I don't know of any other school districts, public school districts, who have this position. I, I tried looking it up and, and I really couldn't find one, but that doesn't mean that maybe we shouldn't do something like that, because that's what I heard our community saying, is that they kind of want to focus and coordinate it, a coordinated look at alternate revenue sources. And I think we, we've got a lot of them coming in, but I, maybe it doesn't feel coordinated to the community, so maybe some of it is just communication with the community as to what's happening, but maybe it could yield more if it was coordinated in a, in a slightly different fashion, and that doesn't preclude a foundation. I mean, this person could work hand in hand with the foundation for what's appropriate for them to do, what's appropriate for us to do, could even work with the PTAs and that to make sure not stepping on anybody's toes, but I'm just saying that I just really think that this is something that, you know, we need to think about in a different way than we've thought about it before, you know? So that's, that's my big idea before, before I leave.
I hear what you're saying, and I also think that we need to resurrect and look at any policies we might have on the books regarding naming rights, regarding advertising, regarding all of that, to make sure that we as a board aren't opening up the floodgates to something that, you know, we don't want to really have happening in our schools as well. So, so I, I don't know, I think one of our initial steps in this regard probably should be reviewing those board policies and, and that, you know, seeing what we have and then recognizing what we may need that we don't currently have, so that we don't get ourselves into, you know, into a situation that might be unsanely. I do, I see what you're saying in terms of revenue generating, let's say from advertising, rental and all of that. Fundraising, I think then you get in a different box, and maybe what we want to decide to do is leave fundraising to the foundation. Well, hear me out. I, I'm talking about, I'm talking about asking people for donations. I'm not talking about partnerships. I think, I think a partnership is different from a donation, and I think, I think, you know, because there has to be some clear lines, because otherwise we're working at cross purposes. I think there have to be some clear lines that need to be drawn. Here's what the district is going to do, here's what the district is going to focus on, here's what the foundation, here's what the district is going to expect from the foundation, and we all work together. Otherwise, you know, you're going to Ivy asking them for a $50 gift certificate, and I'm going there tomorrow asking them for a $50 gift certificate. And I think that is not what we, the game we wanted to get into.
Well, I, I would agree, and I, I don't want to get too much into the weeds on it. I mean, I guess what I was trying to say is there would be somebody who would coordinate with the foundation as to what was being done, so that they weren't stepping on their toes, but on the other hand, was maybe plowing some fields that for whatever reason the foundation either couldn't flower or doesn't have the opportunity to. That's all I'm saying, but, so, I, I, I wouldn't leave, say, say that the district could never look for donations on its own, it just perhaps would make sure that the ones that you're looking at don't conflict with other groups that are out there looking for that same thing, but that, I, again-
There's no, there would be no, there would be no, I don't want to say this. I'm turning, I'm talking about active fundraising, I'm not talking about like if somebody comes to us and says, I want to give you a million dollars, you know, somebody who steps into Dr. Schuler's office and says, I have a million dollars and I want it to go toward, you know-
I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, you know, instructional coaches in all your buildings, there you go. You know, so, I mean, yes, obviously, on the other hand, to do fun runs and golf outings and things like that, I don't think that's something that we want a paid professional at the central office to do, I think that's something that the foundation does. And, and then what we want to do, I think also, is, is channel and maybe start building an endowment fund where people could put their, you know, their bequests, you know, they could put that money, now maybe that goes into the foundation, or maybe, maybe if, if somebody approaches, or, I, I don't know, one arm or the other should actively, or both maybe, should actively solicit that kind of thing, but, but then where does that money go? Does it sit in the foundation, and then the foundation kicks off the money to the district every year?
Well, until we've got money, then we've no need talking about it.
Right, but I mean, those are things, though, Rosemarie, that I think you need to iron out at the outset, because otherwise things could get very confusing and very muddy very quickly, that's all I really am saying.
I have a question. Where do we go from here? I mean, should this be the subject perhaps of the finance committee, or should the staff take these thoughts and move forward somehow? I don't want to get into, I don't think we should get into the weeds here, as somebody said in detail on the board especially, but I think there's some good ideas that can be considered and evaluated and maybe put into some sort of program or idea.
Yeah, so again, I guess a couple of things that I heard out of the conversation. We, we can certainly, you know, dig a little further into some of the research that you're even talking about to see if there's some other models that are out there, if there's some things that the districts are doing either in partnership with their foundation or doing on their own to really kind of target that area, so, I mean, we'll, we'll dig a little further into that. I think, you know, Barb's suggestion, which I think would be easy enough to look at at a, at a future meeting, would just be the policies that we currently have that talk about, about naming rights and advertising things, you know, I think on one level, until we have that discussion publicly that we're really looking at it, I'm not sure what kind of money might really be out there, you know, that, and so on one level, I mean, looking at the concept as a concept is probably different than actually getting into a discussion where you, you potentially have, you know, a, a serious corporation that's saying, I'd be willing to buy a naming right to this and, and, you know, and then you can do some, I think, some cost evaluation. But I, I do think just looking at the policies to see if you have policies that candidly even allow it at this point might not be a bad first step, because I, I think from the discussions that we've had here, those are your two areas of opportunity, really looking to, to boost what's available through the foundation or drive some of the development in the foundation to get more money in in that way, or that sort of advertising, naming right element, I don't think we're down, real far down that road, and you may or may not want to go there, but, but let's at least look at the policies around it and start that conversation if the board is willing to entertain or endorse this, looking at those two areas.
I definitely think I'm for it and applaud that we're trying to get ahead of the game and that recognizing, it's just a different world. I mean, we are, Illinois isn't going to be funding and we're getting it with more, and I would like to just suggest we can say we've tried all these things before, you know, an end fund referendum is needed. I, I love Rosemarie's idea of having, because that would be a full-time job, just going out and maximizing advertising dollars. Advertising is the biggest way to get dollars in, and, and, you know, I think it's just the, we've done it on a small scale with high schools, but, I mean, when you think you have 2,000 kids to target, there's a lot, every, lots of industries, from clothes to food, to, and that, you know, it's just going to have to be okay if we, we want to be able to have what we need to teach and keep our reputation up at the level everyone expects, so I think it's a great idea.
Dr. Schuler, would you envision, once, once you resurrect these policies, would you envision putting together, you know, a committee of maybe a couple of board members to look over the policies and brainstorm maybe with, with, you know, with staff on how those policies need to be revised to make things, you know, modern and, you know, to reflect what's going on in today's, and then maybe bring those policies back to the board for their approval?
I hadn't really thought that far ahead. The idea just, just came out, but I'd be, I would be happy to at least look at the policies first and maybe formulate a recommendation on how we go about it.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, is there any other discussion? Whoops, I turned my, I keep turning it on, but I think I'm turning it on. Is there any, any other discussion? All right, are there any public comments? Okay, here and now, we do have a need for closed session tonight for the purposes of discussing personnel, and no action will be taken after closed session, so I would like to have a motion to adjourn the closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel items, and, so I would like to have that motion, please?
So, move?
Move by Mr. Broman?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Sander, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Broman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Cockhill?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Injehar?
Yes, we're now adjourned to closed session, thank you.